This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, The Star Leisure, and the Highland Park Planet on January 4th, 2023, and was posted at Borough Hall website at www.hpborough.com and on the bulletin board, Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. In addition to the meeting via Zoom, was emailed to the Home News Tribune, The Star Leisure, and the Highland Park Planet on May 12, 2023, and was posted at the Borough website at www.hpborough.com, on the bulletin board, Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, on May 12, 2023, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and right of Council Chamber. Michael, could you lead us in the Pleasure Elegions?
Pleasure Elegions to God, to America, and to the Lord for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Foster?
Yes.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Here.
Councilman George?
Here.
Councilman Hale?
Here.
Council President Hirsch?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Chauhan?
Yeah.
Councilman Stoner?
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier?
Here.
Borough Administrator Hollier?
Yes.
Any questions on the agenda, councilmembers?
No, ma'am.
Council reports, and I'm gonna start off down on my left with Councilmember George.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a brief report. I hope everyone had a safe and happy Fourth of July holiday, and no bad luck with the stream of heavy rains during the past week or so. My report for public safety is brief this week. The administration and public safety representatives have been meeting with representatives of the AJPMT, and Senator Dyckman to discuss the Route 27 road diet plans to increase traffic safety entering and leaving Highland Park. Mayor Foster has a lot more to tell us about this important meeting. We will be celebrating National Night Out in August on Tuesday, August 1st, at the Stop and Shop parking lot. It's a chance to enjoy our community and our neighbors while we have a chance to meet our police, fire, and first aid public safety workers. Chief Abrams said that he has more vendors and food trucks and organizations who want to participate this year, and hopefully the larger site will allow us to accommodate even more. Fire Chief Gershon says that the fire department will also have displays, and the first aid squad always presents valuable information and displays as well. More details are actually being added to the Highland Park Police Department Facebook page almost every day as the chief gets more and more participation, and the information will be on the Borough website as well. The Police Department Junior Police Academy had a presentation today by the Highland Park Fire Department. I spoke with Chief Gershon, and he said that there was great participation, good questions, and a lot of interest from everyone. As we all know, the Highland Park Public Library has closed the building as of Friday, June 30th, for the substantial construction work, which is long overdue. There was some state grant funding, which was applied for a number of years ago. However, the remote site at 901 Raritan Avenue, Route 27, which is across from the Dairy Deluxe Ice Cream Shop at 10th Avenue, will be open, projected for Monday, July 17th, only a few days from now, as the staff transitions remote operations there. This site will be an active library featuring new and favorite offerings of what is popular at the moment, and plans are for pop-ups and programming throughout town for the duration of the construction, which is anticipated to be somewhere between six and eight months. The library's online services will continue as usual with extensive ebooks, videos, and recordings. The library is actually connected with over 30 other libraries, the RMX program, and we hope we won't see any significant reduction in those services. Finally, as a notice they discussed with Councilman Hale for economic development, I attended the boat launching ceremony at the Lower Raritan Watershed Partnership Bergen Auto Site. This project, building several boats in old-fashioned wood crafting, involved hundreds of volunteers and training for women and diverse populations to learn complex carpentry skill exposure and hopefully interest them in these trades. It was a large turnout for the launching of the two boats, a classic wooden canoe and a classic single-seat rowing shell. The drenching rain held out just long enough to get the dedication done at Bergen Auto, and then there were several hours of drenching rain down at Donaldson Park at the boat ramp. However, even so, we still had probably 30 to 40 people there who wanted to try the boats out and who endured some of the rain and then finally just jumped into the water anyway and enjoyed it. And other than that, I look forward to seeing everyone at National Night Out and wish you all a good summer.
Thank you. Councilmember Foster?
Good evening, everyone. First, I just wanted to kick off. An issue gift, a brief reminder of the grocery store transportation online food shopping assistance available through the Department of Community Services. For more information, please reach out to the staff at the community center at 722-819-0052, or go to the staff line. Next up, so tomorrow night, we have swing music at Sunset Village Pavilion. So that's Wednesday, July 12th, at 12:00, 7:30 p.m. We'll have the Highland Swing Big Band, which shows a 15-piece big band, welcome to Village by the Farmers Markets. They'll be playing classics from the '30s to the '60s, and they'll be back Wednesday, August 2nd, same time and place. Also exciting next week, we're kicking off the Park Stock Outdoor Concert Series. So that starts next Thursday, then each Thursday thereafter through August 10th. It will be held at Grove One at Donaldson Park each evening. Up at 1st, July 20th, is Hair Magic and Cold Weather Company. I'm actually a fan of them. July 27th is the Magnolia Street String Band. Each night is from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. There will be select food vendors available. I'll get myself to see you all there. Up next, on Tuesday, July 25th, there'll be an ice cream social from 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the community center. We'll be featuring Magglio's Ice Cream Truck with ice cream and Italian spices, and used by DJ Johnny Ray. Next up, the Fourth of July fireworks in the park. So sadly, disappointingly, they had to be postponed due to forecasted lousy weather for originally scheduled date as well as our originally scheduled train date. So we now have a new firm date of August 31st. It'll still be held at Donaldson Park, but festivities beginning at 6:00 p.m. and fireworks to be a little later on. There'll be the same kind of music activities and multiple food vendors as we had originally scheduled, so looking forward to having that. I will be there and hope everyone will also join me there. So stay tuned for official updated announcements with all the new details. Those should be up shortly. And then lastly, historical commission updates. I think at the last meeting, I mentioned that there was plans for a presentation by the historical commission on the findings from the recently concluded historical survey of downtown that was supposed to be held this Thursday evening. That is going to be pushed back. We don't have a firm date on that, but it will be happening. It will be exciting and interesting. So keep your eye out. Like as soon as we get a firm date and time, we'll be spreading the word all over. It will be held at Pino's. That is still the plan, but we don't have a date, and Thursday is so. So stay tuned for more as that. And that is my report for this week.
Thank you. Looking forward to tomorrow night. I love swing music. Councilmember Kim?
Chauhan? Just one announcement. Last council meeting, I did mention about the new tax bill going out that reflects the new values, the reevaluate that we did beginning of the year, and tonight we have a grace period because of the reevaluation. So that is the deadline for third quarter is August 14th, and that's when a resolution tonight for the grace period has been extended. So take advantage, but not take advantage. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Hale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to Councilman George for attending the boat launch of the Lower Raritan Watershed Partnership. It looked like a fantastic event, and those boats look amazing. I can't wait to take out that skull someday. It looks pretty fantastic.
After we spoke this morning, I already called up to see if I could make an arrangement.
It did. They just looked so beautiful. It was such a great partnership. So thank you very much for doing that. I also wanted to say thank you to Pino's and to the Highland Park Shop Small Initiative. It's a new program that they just put up where if you bring a receipt from another local Highland Park business into Pino's, they will give you 5% off your in-store purchase. Remember, this is just in-store purchases, not online purchases, but it's a 5% off. So I want to say thanks to Shabana and to Steve at Pino's for this really amazing step to try and help all of our businesses in Highland Park. So it's the Highland Park Shop Small Initiative, and Pino's is leading the way on that. So thank you to them for that. As all you know, we have been working with businesses and residents on and around Woodbridge Avenue with the MPP program. Among the projects that we're funding with this initiative is to bring in a company called Storefront Mastery, and they're experts on creating new and exciting external storefronts for small businesses. So this week, we're meeting with a consultant and a few test businesses on Woodbridge Avenue, the Asia Garden and the Highland Park Laundromat to see what might be accomplished with their storefronts. So if you're a business owner in the MPP district and interested in taking part in this project, please reach out to Assistant Borough Administrator Emma Von Boom at evonphun@hpborough.com. It's a great opportunity to get some professional advice about the front end stores. So I also wanted to congratulate Main Street for receiving a grant, the MSNJ District Transformation Grant of $24,000. This grant is providing funds for outdoor public amenities, lighting, community gaming tables, outdoor Wi-Fi, some speakers perhaps out in the parklets and around at the public areas in town. So nice work to Main Street for Rebecca Hershon getting that state grant. Other things up on the Main Street to-do list, of course, Farmers Markets every Friday, Mad Max 2. I don't know if this is with Mel Gibson or without Mel Gibson, but with? Pre-bonkers. Pre-bonk. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate the clarification. On July 8th at 8:00 p.m., I remember being terrified of Mad Max as a kid, so bring your own child and terrify them as well. That's 8:00 p.m. on July 8th. So that's...
Already happened.
Or what?
It already happened.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misread the date. So yes, my apologies. Here's another thing I misread. It's Council Pastoral mentioned the swing dancing on the 12th. That's also happening on the 2nd, August 2nd. So as well as July...
Is it happening tomorrow?
It's happening tomorrow. It's also happening August 2nd. So I just wanted to put that out there as well. At the Welcome Awards.
Check the tape. I could have sworn I said that. I didn't. You said it. Must be summertime.
No, no, no. So thank you for not mentioning that again. Okay, how about this one? September 10th, Arts in the Park. You got that one?
Oh.
Okay, good. September 10th is Arts in the Park. So we'll go with Arts in the Park on that one. Okay, with that, I'm moving to, as I mentioned at the last council meeting, we're gonna be conducting a series of walking tours of the downtown redevelopment areas at the end of this month. And the goal is to do a walk and talk for anyone who's interested in what's gonna be happening at the redevelopment areas, to sort of physically go around and walk downtown, to say, this is track A, this is track B, this is track C, this is D, just to give people a sense. It's easy to see it on paper. We've been in hearings and a wide variety of things. But having the walking tour, I think is a great way for people to sort of visualize where things are gonna go in our redevelopment plans. So it's an opportunity to just get out, to walk, bring water if it's hot. But the plan is that we're gonna meet at Penn Stock Coffee on South Third, and then we're gonna walk over towards the grocery store lot. We'll come back down Raritan. We'll look at track D, C, A, and have conversations about the various things that are brewing in those particular areas. So I've set up a first round of dates for these. We'll put these out widely. The first one is Friday, July 21st at 8:00 a.m. The second one is Wednesday, July 26th at 12:30 p.m. at noon, and then Monday, July 31st at 7:00 p.m. So there's one in the morning, one in the midday, and one in the evening, to try and accommodate a variety of different schedules. Those are just the first ones that we're going to do. If there's demand or interest in more of those, we'd certainly schedule more of those as we go, but we'll see how many people are interested and want to come out. RSVPs are not required, but they are appreciated, just to get a sense of if you are interested in coming. And you can do that by emailing TerryHovear@hpborough.com. Again, they're not needed, but if you are interested in coming, please go ahead and RSVP. So it's so exciting about those. It'll be a chance for the community to come together and sort of see things, not on paper, but in real life. So that's the idea. I think that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Canavera?
Thank you. The Water Health wants to remind you that July is considered a prime month for ticks. Please check yourself, pets, and children for ticks after being outside even for a short period of time. The community food pantry is open the second and fourth Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:45 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And the Saturday following the Thursday from 9:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. Donations can be made using their Amazon wishlist. Highland Park Gives a Hoop Food Pantry is also open every Tuesday from 10:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. Donations can be made by mailing a check to the Borough Hall with a memo that it's for Highland Park Gives a Hoop. Unfortunately, due to rising food prices and the extra help people were getting during the pandemic, being gone, we have more clients than ever. So anybody who can help, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Hirsch?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. Good evening, everybody. My name is Matthew Hirsch. I chair the Public Works Committee. And just a few items that I just wanted to touch on. Last week, very exciting, the Borough finalized a lease agreement with Raisa's Cultural Center. This agreement represents a formal community partnership that provides Raisa's with a, to be able to use and steward the property of the Yung Environmental Center and to continue using that property as a community arts and ecocultural program space. This includes public programming designed for residents of Highland Park, as well to attract visitors from surrounding towns, partnerships with existing borough entities that are currently using the Center, like the Environmental Commission and Sustainable Highland Park, management of the program space, and creation of other program collaborators, collaborations with other borough entities to co-sponsor programming. That meets the mission of the organization, serves the community, and services for the residents of Highland Park in the areas of cultural arts, ecoculture, and community history. Raisa's Cultural Center, and I do feel like this is an opportunity really, you know, so many of us have benefited from the programming that Raisa's provide, but this is an opportunity to kind of maybe introduce this excellent community organization to the community. They have been working, you know, in Highland Park for over eight years. In 2022, they conducted the Community Art Cultural Arts Class Series that was co-sponsored by the Highland Park Arts Commission back in October, established a program partnership with the Highland Park Public Library, providing a seed-saving workshop and co-sponsoring the library's new seed library. They sponsored the 2017 Waters Light International Eco Art Exhibit Series, and co-sponsors included the Highland Park Arts Commission and Sustainable Highland Park. So we look forward to a lot more community partnerships with Raisa's Cultural Center. Congratulations to Nicole Lyons, Francisco Gomez, and the whole team there. We're very, very excited. And if we're going to be remembered for anything, let it be that we were great environmental stewards, and that we use these lands to celebrate and commemorate our deep multicultural roots. Parks, the Public Works portfolio also includes parks. We're working to improve our pocket parks throughout the borough, and one of the main goals of the mayor was to identify new areas where we can place pocket parks and also bolster our existing ones. So tonight is an example of what we're going to see. Today, we're approving a capital organs that allows us to move forward on design, engineering, and construction, design, engineering, financing, and construction of the Fulton Avenue top lot, just one of three proper municipal pocket parks in the borough. If we're going to be remembered for anything else, let it be that we strengthened and beautified our existing public spaces and created new ones. Sustainable Highland Park, working with the community group Highland Park Ecology and Environmental Group, are conducting a series of community cleanups for the next few weeks, and just to list a few, Sunday, July 16th, at the Irving, in and around the Irving School neighborhood, you're going to meet at 10:00 a.m. You'll meet by the entrance by the playground at South 11th. Saturday, August 5th, Bardo School and Neighborhood, meet at 10:00 a.m. and meet along next to the school on Mansfield Street. And then on Sunday, August 20th, at the middle school, 10:00 a.m., meet in parking lot off of North Fifth Avenue. If we're gonna be remembered for anything, let it be that we took care of our lands for our kids and future generations. Roads. Crews are in town. You may have received the NICS alert earlier today. Crews are in town today to finish improvements on several borough roads, including milling and paving on South 10th from Raritan Avenue to Woodbridge Ave. and North 10th from Raritan Avenue to Allen Street. There'll also be milling and paving on Lexington Avenue. That goes from the Highland Park border to Raritan Avenue, and Alcazar Avenue from Central Ave. to Cherry Street. Our Borough Engineer, CME, dropped off notices at each property in the project area, and no parking signs are posted, so please observe those and please take care when driving in those neighborhoods. That's my report. Thank you.
Borough Administrator report?
No report, but I did just want to mention, while we are having National Night Out on August 12th, to accommodate that, we moved our council meeting to August 8th. So the notices went out. The NICS will go out as usual. I just thought I'd put it on everybody's radar now that we pushed the council meeting to August 8th, since we only have one meeting now.
Thank you. Borough Attorney's report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
I do have a very brief report. On a very sad note, the horrific accident that we had last month, I met with the family and, you know, let them know our heartfelt condolences. There's no words to say when someone has lost their loved ones, but I did have an opportunity to meet with the family and let them know that we will continue to work on improving Route 27. And with that, I scheduled a meeting with Senator Dyckman. We're gonna meet with Senator Dyckman, Department of Transportation, our engineering, and our public safety team here, and to talk about way of traffic calming ideas. Maybe we need additional lights on the avenue, maybe rumble strips, but look at additional things that we could do to keep that road safe for all of us. So I'm really excited to have this meeting. This has been long overdue, and I really want to see this meeting take place because something has to be done to calm the traffic on Route 27. While I'm on traffic, I did have a meeting with Dr. Holloway at Rutgers, President of Rutgers, and we talked about some transportation opportunities, and I believe that Highland Park can collaborate with Rutgers University. We have a lot of our students and faculty that work within the Rutgers system. It could be the hospital, the cancer center, and different areas. So I believe that there's a strong opportunity for us to do some collaborative work as it pertains to transportation. I sent him a letter. He followed that up. That's a good sign. So I'm gonna continue to work with him, and hopefully we'll get to a good place with some transportation opportunities at Rutgers University and the Rutgers system because it's not just universities, the hospitals, and all the other technicals that they have there. Follow-up with that, just want to give a quick update as it pertains to where are we with our development in our downtown. I spoke with the new owners of Highland Pizza. They advised me that mid-September, Highland Pizza will be reopened, and they're doing some creative things in that space. So I'm looking forward to that. And I did have a quick meet with one of the owners of the Stop and Shop lot, and they are continuing to work in with their attorney with, I think they have settled it down to one supermarket. So they're working through some details. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed, saying my prayers that they'll come to some kind of a negotiation soon, and then I can report to you where we are, who's coming, and that kind of thing. As you are aware, it's in litigation, so there's very little I can say, but I do want to let you know that I am working diligently on that project. On a note that we all need to be aware of, in my other head, I work for Department of Consumer Affairs, and there has been a huge uptick in scams. For example, yesterday, while I was at work, I got a call from a Highland Park resident saying, "Mayor, why are you stopping this money that's coming to me?" Because somebody's, this scam that's been going on, they said, "We want to get the money to you, but Mayor Foster says no, and if you send us an additional $300, we can bypass her and get you this money." It's a scam. And no matter how much I try to tell the senior that's on the line that this is a scam, they did not believe me because unfortunately, they already sent $2,000 to the scammer. Today, they call them back and say, "Hey, we're ready to deliver the money to you within an hour, $500, and you can have this money." And I said, "Please do not continue to communicate with this person. It's a scam. They will use any name they get off of any website to try to con you out of your money. Do not give them any more of your money." So with that said, we do a scam awareness and a consumer awareness and consumer protection site. So if you know of anyone that would want a group to come in to speak about how to protect yourself from scammers and the various kinds of scams that they have, please do reach out. You can reach out to the Borough, or can you reach out to Middlesex County Department of Consumer Affairs. We want to keep everyone safe. Unfortunately, with this one individual, they don't want their names to be said or heard because now they're embarrassed that they've got taken for almost $2,500. So please be aware, there's a lot of scammers. There's one, I got one the other day from UPS. I ordered nothing from UPS. I texted them, just saying, "Just to verify your name and address." I ordered nothing from UPS. Why would I need to verify? So they find various different ways how to get into people's pocketbooks. So I'm advising each and every one of you to be aware, and if you need this service, please do reach out. That's my report, and thank you. Now I'm gonna move into our public discussion. It's a first-time public discussion, 21 minutes total allotted, three minutes per speaker, the items on the agenda. Comments from members of the public attending the meeting in person will be heard first, followed by members of the public attending via Zoom. Okay, it's now time for the public discussion session, total 21 minutes, et cetera, et cetera. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and allocate three minutes. When three minutes' time have left, she will give you one in of 30 seconds remaining. I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement, or if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided, or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Comments from the member of the public attending the meeting in person will be heard first, followed by members of the public attending via Zoom. If you're interested in speaking, please step up to the microphone, or if you're on Zoom, raise your hand and do star nine on your keypad, and that would indicate that you have raised your hand, and then we'll get to you. Anyone who wish to speak, please step up to the microphone, tell us your name, your address.
What do you name? My name is Jasmine Hyman. I've been a Highland Park resident for nearly 15 years now. My art studio is located in 31 South Fifth Avenue, and I'm a licensed plaintiff of social worker and a licensed plaintiff of mental health patients, but I'm also an artist. So I'm here regarding the event that the Highland Park, I think it was announced, I think it's called a night owl event that is under the Public Safety Department.
National Night Out, yes.
Yes. So the reason, I didn't have time, unfortunately, to submit the proposal, but the reason why I'm here is because I would like to invite the Public Safety Department to include something that I call an installation artist, art that is called the forgiveness project. So the project invites people to... So the project invites people to consider forgiveness as a potential response to interaction we want to know there, and then we leave that is a great installation artwork for that particular event that the water already has. So during the event, I do bring something that is a pop installation, the, her name is Dolores, and she's a mannequin, and she is operating programs. People are invited to interact with her, and also they are, I request them to either pledge forgiveness in everyday interactions, and I also interact with the member with the art of forgiveness. Forgiveness is a learned skill, so really the idea of the project is to help people to have that as a first response with people when they interact with each other. So once that is collected, we do an installation in which we have the forgiveness stories from this book. This gets decorated and put together by anybody that wants to participate, like if we find student or anybody from the public. So it's a very collective art project that here really has people involved and is very nice for the community. So just to summarize, thank you for this time. I didn't have the time to submit the actual proposal, but I hope that I can get approved to have installation on our first, I'm having little table, but I can have Dolores, they are public artwork, and also some artists, including, you know, people to participate in the project. Any questions?
Jasmine, what I would suggest is that you meet with Councilmember George and discuss that with him. He's in charge of public safety, and then that could be worked out through him. Councilmember?
Thank you, Madam. With your permission, I'll speak to her right after the meeting, get some contact information so that I can get the installation details, and I'll discuss that with the chief right away.
Thank you so much.
So if you could be patient till the end of the meeting, shouldn't be too long, I hope, and I'll speak to you back.
No problem. Thank you.
I'll take a look online here. We have four attendees participating on Zoom, but I don't see any hands raised at this time.
All right. Okay, now we're gonna move on to ordinances requiring second reading.
Capital ordinance providing for improvements to the Felton Avenue Tot Lot in an amount of $100,000 was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavit of publication or on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Public hearing? It's time now for public hearing on this ordinance. If you would like to speak, please come up and speak into the microphone. Those who are on Zoom, please put the raised hand.
I don't see any hands raised on Zoom, Madam.
Okay, motion to a double reject?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ken Choula?
Yes.
Councilwoman Distonik?
Yes.
Okay, now we move to the consent agenda items, and consent agenda items, page 14 to 14J. Motion?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ken Choula?
Yes.
Councilwoman Distonik?
Yes, and I just want to make a brief comment that in regards to Resolution 7-23-165 to reappoint Housing Board Member Ruby Hope, I served on that in Housing Authority for a number of years alongside her prior term, and I just want to make a note of appreciation that she is coming back to the board. She's a true asset and a wonderful person, so I'm really happy to see she'll be back on the Housing Board.
Again, yes. Great. Now we go to the second public comment for participation. It's time for the second public discussion. Total time allotted is 21 minutes, three minutes maximum per speaker. Our clerk will monitor the time and indicate when the three minutes have left. She will give you a warning that says 30 seconds remaining. I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided, or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Comments, comments from members of the public attending the meeting is heard first, followed by those who are on Zoom. To speak, those who are on Zoom, please raise your hand by pressing the star nine button and the star nine button and star six to unmute yourself. Anyone who wish to speak, please come up to the microphone and address yourselves.
Mayor, I see no hands raised. Again, we have four attendees participating on Zoom.
Madam, if you have no objection, just to add into your comment on consumer affairs issues, I was just holding it, one, it started going around this afternoon, I actually was looking it up just before the meeting, someone with a local number, a 908 number, is calling saying they're from PSC and G, and they're using our program where you could sign up to get a lower rate. They're using our program to say, your time is running out to call right away, and you could pay this fee and build it up. And it was literally just going around this afternoon. So please, everyone, do not return that call. I looked the number up. It is reported as a scam number, but it just started, and it sounds very legit, because they actually looked us up to use the information. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
And no, it's not an interruption, and they may, just like the person that called, the scammer used, they went on the Borough website and used my name. It says Mayor Foster.
Yeah.
So any one of our names can be used to perpetrate a fraud, so we just have to be doing our due diligence and try to get as much information and education as possible. Okay. Do you guys need a five-minute recess?
I do not.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Spotting favor. Well, enjoy the summer, everyone, and thank you all for attending. Good night.